Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the Wednesday, January 22nd Board of Education meeting. It's nice to see so many faces in the room. There are about ten or so seats right here in the front row. If you'd rather not stand in the back, I promise we won't bite you tonight. Anyway, there are some seats. Thank you for finding seats over there, middle schoolers. So wherever you are comfortable is fine with us this evening. As we call this meeting to order, I do want to remind everyone if you plan to make a public comment this evening, please complete a comment card and give it to Mrs. Callard at this time. Also, please silence your cellphones and remove your hats as we stand for the fun believed in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please give the roll call, please, Mrs. Callard.
Amy.
Present.
Hanson.
Present.
Monica.
Present.
Murphy.
Present.
Odell.
Present.
Ramber.
Present.
Present. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
We'll move forward.
It's been moved accepted to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Up first this evening are our reports, and we will start with our student board reps.
Good evening, everyone. I first wanted to introduce Ella. She is our new incoming board rep. Very excited to see everything she has in store. She's a great girl, so I'm going to introduce her first. So I wanted to start talking about last meeting. I talked about the Hoops for Hope game, and I'd say, like, it went very well as an understatement. Like, even with the snowbed roads, people still came and supported Ella, and she was just super happy too. And it was super, it was super sweet to see her, and, um... Yeah, so a bunch of people came. Student sections for Fenton and Lyndon were both completely full, even both of the stands were as well, which is good to see. Lyndon did win by a couple of points. Kind of like at the last game, it was back and forth a lot. And then exam, exams for the high school were just this past week, so those are now done. And then with the snow days and everything, I really only have information on those two high school weeks tonight. But so, yeah, but that being said, we wrapped up exam week, and then we're coming into the second semester, which is exciting, especially for the seniors, that it's kind of that last, kind of, you know, last semester. And then, so there's not much really going on besides that. Last Monday, there was the FASPA night, so that's where students that are here can go to help with kind of setting up the FASPA and just kind of getting to know more about it. I know a bunch of students said that it was a big help and that they really appreciated it going on. And then on February 3rd, the local scholarships will be posted, and then sometime in March they'll be due, but I just want to just get them posted then. And for the middle school, for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, they're having like a stage show presentation, but it was supposed to be the 21st, 22nd tomorrow, so I don't exactly know how it's going to get rescheduled, but I just want to say how I think that's definitely something that they're bringing into Lyndon, like the schools. I know when I was in there, I believe that it had happened, but I think it's definitely a different experience for the middle schoolers and that they can just kind of see that side and how going into more middle school, more high school, you want to think about what you're going to be, and I think having that and just getting them to know that a lot would be good. And that's why, or, and to end it, any more service opportunities. I know people have been emailing me about it, so thank you so much, but if any more come up, just let me know.
All right, thank you very much. Up next this evening is our superintendent report, Mr. Soselski.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. This evening, first of all, thank you to our community, to the patients over the last few days as we dealt with the cold weather. We are looking forward to getting everybody back to schools tomorrow. Just some response to public comments. I did contact Mrs. Lewandowski regarding her public comments on the Lyndon High School concession area and cashless pay system for concessions. We are at a point with our construction that we are waiting for final inspection of the Lyndon High School concession area, which is scheduled for January 30, and once we receive, we will be fully operational. The Lyndon Athletic Booster does have a cashless pay system and currently uses a system for outdoor events. Unfortunately, they have not been able to get the system to work indoors. It is my understanding that workers are being done to fix this issue. As Lizzie indicated, the basketball game, Fenton versus Lyndon, a little wonderful evening. This year, I think we raised approximately $2,187 to help with the family, and really, it's because of the generosity of our community, and I think that's what sets Lyndon apart from, in my mind, everybody else. So again, thank you to the community for stepping up and working as a village. Just a reminder, Board, the Genesee County Association of School Board members is having Detective Sarah Combs present on Building Safer Communities Together. This presentation takes place on Thursday, February 20th, 6:00 PM at the GISD. If you aren't planning to attend, please RSVP to Mrs. Callard by February 13th. A quick update on the Series 3 bond sales. Last Thursday, Kylie Rush, our business director, and I met with Baker Tilly, our financial group, to review and apply for a standard and poor rating for the upcoming Series 3 bond sale. And so we should have that within the next week or so. And then the last thing I have, as we'll celebrate tonight a little bit, on behalf of Lyndon Community Schools, I would like to thank our Board of Education for their continued support, tireless efforts, and dedication for providing our students and staff with opportunities to be successful. It is an ongoing journey, but as a collective whole, you've been able to bring things for our students. So for that, I thank you. In front of you, you do have a certificate of appreciation for your dedication, signed by MASP President James Johnson and Executive Director Don Motrova. You also have a shirt that on behalf of Lyndon Community Schools, again, appreciation for what you do, we're proud of you, and we will. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ross, and thank you on behalf of the Board for the gifts as well and the recognition. All right, students, so you heard it from Mr. Soselski here first. What's the percent chance of a school snowbait tomorrow?
Zero.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to go with.
What does it count?
We never want to say zero, right? Because there's always a chance, but I know my kids are always like, what do you think the chances are? We just have two. Save them. Save them, my friends. All right, are there any board members with the reports this evening? All right, see, none. The only thing I had was to remind the Board about the presentation at the GCASB, and Mr. Soselski has already done that, so I'm good as well. So we will move right along. For all of the awesome students that are here tonight for student recognition, we always say that this is the very best part of any board meeting, because it absolutely is, and that's completely true. So we have some awesome students to recognize this evening. So we'll just kind of go through in the order on my list here, and we'll start with Central Elementary. Sure. We will start with Lyndon Elementary. Oh, we will start with Central. We'll start with whoever wants to go first. How about that?
We're trying to find her. Is Penny here? I don't think Penny's here yet.
All right, we can hold on. No worries. Yeah, so we'll come back. So let's move along to Lyndon Elementary. It looks like Mrs. Stricker is here to present.
Yes, and I am going to introduce Mrs. Heckman. Our student of the month is Lillian Ward. She is a second grader at Lyndon now and a treasured one of our Lyndon leaders, and this is her wonderful teacher, Mrs. Heckman.
Thank you. I'd like to present Lillian Ward. She is a model citizen and outstanding student. Not only does she-
Can I have her a few just for a second? Can you press the button to turn the mic on?
Thank you kindly.
Thank you. That's perfect. All right, we can hear all the awesome things that you're saying about Lillian.
Yeah, she's amazing. Not only is she a model student, but an outstanding citizen. So she embodies what it means to be an Eagle. She soars every day, but not only that, she encourages others to soar. She's well-rounded and just an outstanding person.
Is this the only other thing?
What are you doing, girl? You gotta go off here and interview her.
Well, great job, Lillian. Thank you for all of your hard work at Lyndon now, keeping an awesome sore leader. All right, up next, we'll do Lyndon Middle School. So whoever's here to present Lyndon Middle School student of the month, all those presenters. Maybe I should have the principal sit in the front row, so I know they're aligned here.
First off, congratulations to all of the students of the month. Great to come up here and see all the smiling faces and the recognitions that you all deserve. I have Mrs. Towesley here on behalf of Lyndon Middle School to present Owen.
Thank you, Principal Anders. I'm Melissa Towesley. I am the ELA teacher for our sixth B team at LMS. That's your last year. I presented for these. I'm going to try not to cry this year. I don't know. I love my kids. I don't know. It's such an honor and gives me great pleasure to announce that Owen has been selected by admin and his teachers as our student of the month for LMS. Owen is a shining example of what it means to be a successful and well-rounded student. His dedication to learning is evident in his consistent functionality and his eagerness to engage in all types of discussions inside the classroom. According to his math teacher, Owen is very open-minded in the classroom and absorbs the material with grace. He possesses all of the qualities of a grave owner. Not only does Owen give 110% to his academics, he is consistently demonstrating kindness and respect toward all of his peers and his teachers. I can recall multiple instances where Owen patiently assisted a classmate who's struggling with a difficult concept, ensuring they understood the material. Not only that, but he sits in the same group as his twin sister, Olivia, and they get along way better than me and my brother. I have to say that. His act of selflessness exemplifies his compassionate nature and commitment to creating a supportive learning environment for everyone. Owen, your positive attitude, hard work, and genuine kindness are inspirations to us all. Congratulations on as well.
Owen, congratulations. It's pretty special that there's so many of our Lyndon Middle School peers and teachers here this evening as well, like him joining in the celebration with you and your family, so keep up the good work. All right, we will do Lyndon High School here. I think Mr. Dresky did it.
Thank you, and congrats to everybody tonight that's student of the month. We have another wonderful candidate, the representative of Lyndon High School, along with Mr. Nagy, who nominated Anthony Kasowski as the Lyndon High School student of the month for January.
First off, I want to thank the school board during the appreciation week. We brought cookies back here from LA for you guys, I'm sure. People are going to get to those, but grab yourself one. And to the younger guys that are getting their student of the month awards right now, keep doing what you're doing. It's awesome. You'll be up here. Are we nominating you in a few years soon? Right now, we got Anthony though. Anthony, the second one I have nominated this year, first one, Drew Larvy. I talked about what product Lyndon puts out there, what we're putting into the world. Drew's going to Michigan Tech for football. Now we have Anthony, who is kind of, I don't think grade point really describes him. He's got a good grade point, what is it, 3.8? So he's doing something right in the classroom. But he did make an appointment to tell me he's been the only male in the student council with his groups in sixth grade. Unified basketball, vice president, NHL, lake leader, member of SAD, ground community team quest. That is kind of his breadwinner. He's won multiple awards for that, several thousand dollars. He was the only Michigan student to go to New York and participate in a sales pitch competition. And with the money he's won, he's actually started his own business, Grand Haven Subscriptions. Is that right? Yeah. He sells house plant subscriptions in Lyndonville plant, so kind of a unique thing that I'd never heard of, but it seems like working for him, and I know you said you put a lot of money into this. And your mom has also said that. I had to early nominate him so his brother can't be the only one in the house with a student of the month award, because Anthony, he gets upset with that stuff, but... But yeah, so he's won several thousand dollars. I know three thousand that he's won in different competitions with that, so just with everything he does, that, all that whole list of things I do, I was talking about. Yeah. Again, this is what we want to put out there into the world, because we know he's going to do good things. He's going to bring it back to Lyndon. He's going to help the community, and we're just going to get better and better. So, congrats, Anthony.
Hey, boy. Appreciate you.
Anthony, congratulations. And all of Mr. Nagy's joking aside, you're doing something right, buddy, or else you wouldn't be here tonight, so keep up the good work. And you should share your website with the school board. I would love to see what you're doing. That's really cool. That's awesome. All right, we're going to go back to Central Ella. I don't know if your student is here or not, but you can go ahead and just, you know, we'll celebrate her anyway.
Hi, I'm Caroline Base. Mrs. Adams and I nominated Penny Prokonzola. She's our fourth grade student here at Central. So even though she's not here with us tonight, it's such joy for Mrs. Adams and I to work her with the student of the month. She's such a gentle and kind person, and as a student, Penny's always on task and ready to learn. And in her quiet way, she's one of our best classroom helpers. Penny's conscientious and dependable, and she takes her assignments and brings them back ready to hand in. If she's struggling, she asks for help, and after she receives that help, she always gives us a thank you. As a friend, Penny's kind, and she gets along with everybody, and she's quick to include everybody at school. She's a student who can sit next to anyone without a complaint. Penny's intervention teacher reports that she's a sweet and a hard-working girl, and she's always willing to do her best. She tries very hard. She's friendly and helpful and to staff and students alike. She's a wonderful choice for a student of the month.
And although she's not here, we cannot wait to present this to her. She already came to me. I don't know if she came to your room too, but she came to me and said, "Did you, did you know?" And, you know, when Mrs. Horford let her know and called the parents, and she was so excited, and so she's going to love this, and she is so deserving of that.
Well, please pass the line. Congratulations. And if she's like sad that she missed this, because that's possible with whatever maybe happened, she can come to the next board meeting. We will recognize her all over again, so we want to make time for all of our reading students. All right, up next is our Hyatt Elementary student of the month. Mr. Stricker and Mr. Thomas here.
Well, good.
Yes, we do.
Good evening, and thank you so much. I'm very proud of my man. I was such a fine roommate at night. Mr. Thomas is going to be here to celebrate Mr. Benjamin Bedell, and you're just a rock star. Congratulations.
Certificate pizza. Sure, it's your sister if you like. Enjoy.
I was asked to choose a student of the month. There's no doubt in my mind that choosing Ben Bedell. Reason why I chose him is he's a wonderful young man, diligent about his work, and makes sure he does the best he can, always can. He's an extremely hard worker. What he does is the very best, even when he's unsure, so he's still able to work through problems and are asking for the help that he needs. I'm happy to see all this hard work paid out last two market years, and he's done extremely well. He's a warm, kind hearted person who tries his best to make sure everyone has what they need or goes above and beyond what a friend does in class. Ben's also very responsible and been one of our school's safety control helpers and does an excellent job of being a sore leader at your school. What I really love about Ben is that he seems quiet and has so much to share with you at the same time. Although it may not be in words, he will still be able to relay a message about something going on. Even one time when he thanked me for a reward he won in class, he made sure to go out of his way to be showing a letter saying how grateful he was that I actually gave that reward and showed the kindness and appreciation and gratitude that a great characteristic of the making of movies is. He's a great personality out in class, and I couldn't imagine it in a year without him. Congratulations. Keep up the fantastic work you've been doing here each and every day, Ben.
Congratulations, Ben. And even though Mr. Stricker said so, I don't think you have to share your pizza with your sister. And one thing that's always really nice when we have these students of the month is just hearing about all the awesome qualities that they have as people. It's not always about their grades or being the smartest student in the room. In fact, it's rarely ever about that. It's about showing kindness to others and just being a good friend and being able to help one another. And I'll be like Mrs. Towesley soon to get all teared up if I say too much more, but anyway, which she didn't this time, so you passed the line to me. Thank you. Yeah, that was good. Anyway, so it's just really refreshing for us always to hear about all the amazing students we have. And even if you're in the room tonight and haven't been a student of the month in the past, I'm sure you are an amazing Lyndon sore leader as well. So thank you all for being here. Congratulations again to all the students of the month. All right, so we'll just have to get that first. That's all right. Mr. Soselski's kind of throwing out here. It's working. All right, well, you're at the microphone, so we'll just let you continue as we have it.
Thank you very much. We, Hyatt, have a hot safe control program going on for third grade. It's a program we started up just to show our leaders in class, give them an opportunity to shine, and to demonstrate what a sore leader is, to give someone for everyone in the undergrads to look up to, and then to follow role models. And I just wanted to bring this up because we want to do board appreciation. We actually appreciate all that the board does with the hard work and dedication you do for our schools each and every day. We want to show our thank you and how part of our dedication, why you guys do, and a lot of great programs with the safe control. We appreciate all that you guys do, and we have some gifts for you.
Well, thank you.
The safe control.
I can't help but notice that poor Ben got student of the month, and then he got put to work. I think this deserves a second pizza, Ben. I'll talk to Mr. Stricker. Thank you very much.
Call me out, probably. Everybody likes to-
Well, you know, it holds accountability. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Stricker and Hyatt Elementary, for your words and your gift of appreciation to the board members. All right, Lyndon Elementary is next on my list here. If you have anything you'd like to come to the podium for, this song is so awkward. All right, who's next?
I have five wonderful third graders from Lyndon Elementary, and they are going to be reading a poem and offering you a gift of appreciation.
That was awesome, you guys. Thank you so much. It's very great to stand in front of a group of people and speak, so thank you for being here this evening. This is awesome. Thank you. We could use this for when we vote. This might help with that. Thank you very much, Mrs. Stricker as well. All right, Central Elementary.
Good evening. I don't know if you can follow up with that. Anyways, we're making it so special. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you board members for all that you do for our Lyndon Eagles. Thank you for making it so special. I do have Michelle Perkins and Jen Coe, who lead our student complex at Central Elementary, as well as some fabulous student representatives that would like to share some kind words with you and some small bits.
Thank you to the board for helping us with all the issues that we've had over the year, and thank you for fixing plenty of problems that we've had.
Thank you for your time and effort and your willingness to come to school with a better education and a safer path for us to learn happily.
Thank you for all you do with helping us every day.
So at this time, we would like to present you with some cards our student council members have made, and we also have a small treat.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight, and you're welcome. Thank you for being here to thank us. It's a nice reminder for students why we do what we do in this job, because sometimes it gets really hard. And it's a nice reminder that you students are why we take care of everyone, stand happy, we make lots of conversations and make lots of hard decisions, so we appreciate you as well. Thank you very much, Central students and teachers. All right, Lyndon Middle School is up next.
Hey, Melissa, again. I'm student council sponsor, and I've got some amazing kiddos here to thank you all for all of your hard work.
Lyndon Community Schools is a great place to learn and grow. This year, show appreciation. There are board members who decided their speeches using a poem. L is for leadership. I is for inclusive. N is for noble. E is for determination. P is for excellence. V is for nature.
In honor of Captain Smith, who created me today, I'll be reading theirs. L is for leadership. Although we do not see our board members in their classroom every day, they play a very important role in making our schools the absolute best they can, can be. It is because of the amazing leaders on this board that we too can learn to be leaders ourselves. I is for inclusive. Our incredible board members prioritize inclusivity when making decisions for our school district, whether it be for student athletes or for special education programs. Our board members ensure that all people are welcome, accepted, and provided with the best possible education.
N is for noble. While the word noble might seem a little old-fashioned, it perfectly describes our school board members. Each member consistently demonstrates the qualities associated with nobility, including honesty, courage, kindness, and a strong sense of responsibility.
D is for determination. Having determination is very powerful, no matter what you are trying to achieve. In our board members' case, they have determination to make our school district the absolute best it can be. They set goals, persevere through challenges, and never give up on the students, teachers, admin, and especially themselves.
E is for excellence. Achieving excellence within a school district is not an easy feat, and our board members know this first hand. With excellence comes hard work, courage, leadership, and loss of blame for mistakes. We are very thankful for the board members that learn us to be excellent in school and in life.
N is for nurturing. Our board members know what it takes to be successful in life, and nurturing their students is always top priority for them. Our school board members always create a safe and welcoming learning environment where they provide emotional and educational support and foster involvement. Thank you, school board members, for all your hard work and our thank you for us.
That was awesome, you guys. Thank you very much. And the fact that you wrote all of those comments is very meaningful. We appreciate that. Mrs. Towesley, is there anybody who could get like a copy of what they wrote? That would be awesome. Thank you. Thank you all very much for being here too. I just also realized we're the last students in the room for a group that didn't have to go to school today. So thanks. Thanks for getting dressed. All right. Last but certainly not least, uh, Linden High School.
Hi, I'm Chloe Josephson. I'm here this evening to represent Linden High School Student Council. As this high school student council, uh, president, I would like to thank the school board for their service to our district and community. The student body appreciates the continuous efforts the board has placed on student growth, progress, and development to all learners. The students are, are able to strive for excellence because of our continual support and your leadership. Student council mirrors the way the board works with community, staff, and students to provide best education for the student body. Again, thank you to all of you for all your hard work and appreciation and then thank you to my grandfather for doing all of this. So we are here to present, uh, a little gift for you guys.
Thank you, Chloe, for your nice words. All right. And I was Rod. We have Argentine Elementary still too. I'm not blaming Mr. Siselski because I can't blame myself, but again, this list. All right. Sorry about that, Ms. Braden.
Someone help me? I'm Erin Braden. Yeah, right. I'm Erin Braden, I'm the early childhood director at Argentine and on behalf of the staff and students at Argentine, who are all done with this meeting. Um, we, each made an, each classroom made an individual gift for each of the board members, so I'm just gonna pass this one for you.
Thank you very much, Erin, and thank you to your, please pass one or maybe a few to the student and staff as well. That's all right. If you have a student here that's done with the meeting, we can feel her pain probably. All right. See, there's a student of the month for you, right there. Well, again, on behalf of the entire board, I know you are here to thank us this evening, but we thank you, um, for being here and for, um, recognizing, um, and appreciating the work that goes into being a board member. Most days it's, it's a lot of fun. Um, and, and we enjoy being a part of the district and are honored to represent the district and helping hopefully good decisions for all of our students, um, staff and community, so are there any other board members that would like to say anything? All right. Yes, on behalf of all of us, so thank you all very much. All right. At this time, we'll take a quick pause. If you're here for any of the recognition and would prefer not to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are welcome to, I said quietly, although we'd love for you to stay. My kids have told me we call them board meetings because they're more. Looks like you might be going to, like, Texas Drive. Up next is our advisory about the state this evening and we've got some, so we're giving you, uh, an update on the safety fund information, so no rough talking as well.
So again, uh, I just wanted to give the board an update on our safety fund, you could see, uh, in the last slide. There are some decisions later on, uh, as we move forward with the rest of the school year, uh, that the board will have to make. Uh, so real quick, just an overview of what safety fund is. Uh, it's basically, um, an, an option that school districts have to help fund capital expenditures, uh, related to our facilities and, and equipment. Uh, it does dedicate annual amounts of funds that are community approved, um, but it does allow us to keep educational dollars in the classroom. And so, as you see out there, the note in two thousand seventeen, just prior to our last election, uh, safety fund election, uh, legislature expanded the uses to include technology and school security improvement, which were included in our bond language, our ballot language, that our community approved back in two thousand seventeen. So just, uh, a quick historical side, uh, to my knowledge, as far back as I can, I can find right now, we've had thirty plus years, uh, community-supported safety funds. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, our community did approve a nine-year safety fund and thank you to that correction, this emergency originally had ten years. Once you brought that up, I do remember, we did change it to kind of align with election cycles. So in two thousand seventeen, our community approved a one point three mil renewal. Uh, currently, uh, we collect one point one nine mils, uh, because of, of, of the headly rollback, we'll talk about that in a minute. It generates approximately, and this is our average, uh, since two thousand seventeen, uh, eight hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, and again, our current balance is just north of four million dollars. Um, what we can use the safety fund for, uh, purchase of real estate for sites, construction, repair of buildings, uh, school security improvements, uh, acquisition or upgrading of technology, and other purposes authorized by law. And again, on the M A S B O website, they have a long list, including rationale of what can and can't be used under safety funds. So what's the headly? Basically, uh, the, the headly amendment, uh, if property taxes continue to go up, which they have in Genesee County, in particular, our school district, uh, the headly reduces the amount of mils that we can lend to keep that equalization up. Uh, in theory, we're gonna collect around that eight hundred eighty-six thousand dollars on a yearly basis. As more people move into our district, we collect more money because of property values for that particular individual, they're taxed on that. So again, as it says, it's a total taxable property increase, um, it's more than the inflation rate. Again, it rolls back, uh, our, our safety fund now. Okay? So again, a, we're, uh, renewal was one point three, we're down to one point one nine. So real quick, just a, a visual of where we're at since two thousand seventeen, uh, as far as our revenue collected, in the blue, uh, our expenses that we've used safety fund money, so we'll get to that here in a moment. Uh, and then our overall safety fund balance, as I said, originally it was at four million, it has decreased, but as you can see, uh, in a moment, we, we do have some to cover costs that the board has already approved for our safety fund. Uh, one question, as you look at revenue collected, why is there such a drop from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five? We've only collected half of that revenue so far this year. So we still have another half to go. This information is based on, uh, actual collections. So what have we spent the safety fund on, uh, since two thousand seventeen? And again, uh, there's a longer list there, um, of things that we needed. Uh, either A, the bond may not have covered it. Uh, this expansion of our student parking lot was something that after we saw the design, you know, we didn't wanna, uh, uh, polygon, I think that's the right term, mathematical geometrical shape. We wanted the square. So again, we used some safety fund dollars to square that off and gave us some more parking spots. Uh, fire alarm repairs, concrete replacements, um, multi, the, the wall sign, the multipurpose building that we see on the front, uh, automatic gate at Linden Middle School, parking lot expansions, some playground funding, um, stadium enhancements that we did with the turf fencing, press box, uh, baseball field, softball field renovations, um, uh, pole light repairs and replacements that we did across the district. Uh, so again, we are using for the appropriate purposes to enhance our district. Uh, you can see that we do have two items that we've gotten covered that the board approved, just over a million dollars there. Uh, site work at Hyatt Elementary, and again, if you remember, that's for the potential expansion, we're moving that road, the service drive, we're pushing it further north, uh, and straightening it out, our bus loop if you will. And then, uh, some playground work at Hyatt, uh, that the board has approved for early childhood at approximately three hundred and five thousand dollars. Some other anticipated expenditures that we have, uh, for this year is monetary systems for all our building. Uh, redoing the front entrance at Linden Middle School, you can see where we've taken out, uh, some trees that were kind of overgrown, uh, so we do have a plan in place. Uh, the entrance, uh, Linden Middle School, the sidewalk, uh, replacement that we're gonna see up there. We do have some repairs to do on the AC unit, uh, at Argentine. Uh, miscellaneous playground equipment repairs, we have ten, ten thousand dollars, kind of earmarked for that, and then including the work that the board has already approved. So looking forward, continued use of the safety fund dollars, we've brought different ideas to the board, nothing official, uh, whether it be kind of our vision of, of what our, our site plan is here on this campus, uh, Linden Elementary, Hyatt Elementary. We do have some work, possible expansion with, uh, the early childhood center that we talked about. So again, we'll continue to use some of those funds to enhance, uh, with, with what we're doing with the board. Obviously, it comes to the board for approval in most cases. Uh, safety fund renewal election, something we do have to look at eventually. Um, our safety fund will end, uh, December of two thousand twenty-six. And so as a board, we have to make the decision, uh, to ask for, uh, an extension or a renewal. Um, you could ask for a new safety fund, uh, in that case, we would change the mil rate, uh, depending on, again, usage and, and collection. So we have a couple options, uh, these are just some examples. Uh, there is a, an election for May fifth, two thousand twenty-six. If that was something we would need, uh, we would probably have to pass a board resolution around December of two thousand twenty-five. So again, we go through the process, make sure that the, the clerks in the county have the proper information, uh, to get that on the ballot. Now, if we do a May election, you do skip a headly rollback, if there is one, because headly is not released until April. Obviously, in December, the resolution will be passed, that information will be sent out. Um, once that becomes official, that's what goes on the ballot. So in that case, if headly numbers are released, they can't come back on us. So again, there's, there's pros and cons. Potentially, we would probably pay for an election in May. You know, unless there's something else that is put on the election, uh, if we're the only, uh, valid item, we would be responsible for that cost. August twenty-five of two, of two thousand twenty-six, uh, again, if we wanted to look at that election, um, we would have to pass a board resolution sometime in March, again, to get the proper paperwork to the proper channels. Uh, that being a primary election for potential state, uh, and or some federal seats, uh, there could be a shared cost there. And so, and with that, I'll open up our discussion.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Siselski. Uh, what questions or comments do board members have? Mr. Murphy?
There's a lot. Thank you, Mr. Siselski, for, uh, presentation on safety fund. Um, I've been kind of a fan of the sinking fund for multiple reasons. Um, one of the reasons is that it provides a, kind of an ongoing yearly stream of revenue that does not have to be spent. Much like, uh, when you do a seller bond for a school to renew, there's a timeframe where that money has to be used. And I, and I think that tends to, can lead towards, uh, making that, uh, strong, uh, investments at times. We have money, you have to use it. I think, uh, our last bond was, was okay. I, I didn't agree with all the issues in it, but, uh, for the most part, it was fine. But, uh, I think that did bond, did take a lot of pressure off our sinking fund in the sense that that's why it's ballooned to, uh, three, probably four, four million and we'll lose a million with the work that's slated so far that's been approved, so probably be back to close to a little over three million moving forward. Um, I think it's a sys- uh, system of financing that the, uh, community generally supports for those reasons. And, uh, so I'm looking forward to, uh, asking for a renewal of what we're charging right now. Now, Mr. Siselski, you mentioned the amount of money that's collected, the house, uh, currently, what, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars?
That, that number that I have on there, Steve, uh, is, is our current safety fund average.
Okay.
Uh, since the two thousand seventeen election. I believe last year, we collected over a million dollars.
I was gonna say, you know, that, that, that number changes every year as you, as you have more houses and we see a lot of houses being built in the area. Not so much businesses, but more so on the housing side. We seem to become a, a pretty strong bedroom community, uh, which is nice. I mean, the traffic's not as bad as if it was a business community, but, uh, we, we do lose a little bit out on the, uh, money that you can, um, acquire from businesses. Uh, like the Fenton area, they have a strong business community, so they have a lot of businesses that contribute that same military to, uh, their sinking fund. And the sinking fund stays very local to help, uh, collect safety fund. That's one of these I've always kind of disagreed with, the funding structure. Uh, proposed way was a great thing in the sense that it balanced out the fact that you live in a community, but you also do business in other communities, so, uh, you support those communities. And so that money that's generated is allowed to flow back through to all communities on a more equal basis through proposed way and the education side, but it doesn't really address the improvement side or the bond side. And so, if I had a dream, uh, if I had a wish, it would be to come up with a structure that would also allow that to trickle back from the business communities around the state, around the area, to all districts and not just to the district where, where the businesses are located. So, um, yeah, basically, uh, I, I think we're on the right track here with the sinking fund and I, I, I'm gonna continue the use of it in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, any other board members, Ms. Haney?
Thank you for the presentation. I know historically in the past, when it came to prioritizing projects, didn't we have a committee at one point?
Yes.
And are we still utilizing that?
We, we, we haven't necessarily met on a regular basis because, as Mr. Murphy indicated, when we put the bond projects together, it was based on our needs list, which was lengthy, because over the years, and, you know, with a lot of money we were collecting, in some cases, projects ended that.
Sure.
Um, so those would just continue to add other projects when it happens. So, uh, the safety fund, or excuse me, that, that list, in theory, went away because we included, uh, those projects into the bond.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. I think, in general, uh, I agree with what Mr. Murphy indicated as well. I think it makes sense personally about renewal and, um, and probably also to maybe circle back and you've discussed this on some of the, um, potential project ideas that you and Mr. Menendez have brought to us in the past, um, to start thinking, you know, a little more seriously about seeing some of those come to fruition, so, yeah, thank you very much for the update. All right. Moving along, uh, you have your public comments this evening? All right. And that brings us to the consent agenda.
All right, and that brings us to the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda this evening does include our minutes of our work session meeting from January eighth, personal summary sheet, invoices for the month of December, and, uh, LHS Student Council Leadership Conference. Um, it is the administrative recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
A move. Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve the consent agenda as presented. Um, any questions there, comments on that? All right, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a few, um, pretty easy actua tions this evening. Uh, the first three actually, um, are related to, um, board member, uh, training and professional development. The first one being for myself, um, to attend the twenty twenty-five M A S B Winter Institute. Um, not in whole, but I have, uh, four CBAs, uh, that I have chosen to attend, um, and would like board support to continue, um, to be able to attend those. Um, so it would be the CBA two twenty-three, which is parliamentary procedure, CBA two forty-eight, which is team building, CBA two fifty-two, which is media relations, and CBA two fifty-nine, which is creating trust. Um, so, uh, I guess it is the administrative recommendation to approve, uh, my attendance, uh, sharing luck at the Winter Institute to take those CBA coursework, um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this?
Thank you for continuing your professional development.
All right, very good. Uh, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so along the same vein, but less weird for me, as you mind you, I'd like to attend the Winter Institute. Um, and attend the Board President's Workshop, uh, Part One and Part Two, and as Mr. Monti's new, uh, role as Vice President on the Board, it would be a good, um, uh, workshop for him to attend. So it is the administrative recommendation to, uh, approve Mr. Monti's, uh, attendance at the Board President's Workshop as presented. Do I have a motion?
A move.
It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions on this one? Mr. Murphy?
Yep, I just feel like, uh, it was a class that I took way back in the day before I became president, and I found it to be helpful. And I think with Mr. Monti's responsibilities, potentially filling in for a meeting, it's, it's a good, uh, knowledge base to have. So I think you'll enjoy it, and I think we'll enjoy, I think he enjoys it. Thank you.
Very good, and I agree. It was very helpful for me as well. Mr. Monti's gonna have the opportunity to take advantage of it, he learns it real quick. Cause I'll be, uh, have a set from a meeting later in February, which I already have an item also. All right, so it's been, uh, moved and seconded to approve Jared Monti's Board President Workshop, Part One and Part Two is presented. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and, um, last but not least, with regard to the M A S B, uh, trainings this evening. Uh, Brooke Hansen would like to attend the Labor Relations Workshop, um, at the end of February. Um, so it is the administrative recommendation to support, uh, Brooke's attendance at this workshop as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second that. Um, so any comments or questions regarding Brooke's attendance at this workshop?
Thank you for continuing your professional development.
I should have said that to you too. All right, very good, yes, thank you, Brooke. Uh, so all those in favor, uh, to approve Brooke Hansen's attendance at the Labor Relations Workshop as presented? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, this evening, we do need to appoint our, um, Genesee County Association of School Board Members Representative and Alternate for the year. Uh, we had some discussion on this at the last meeting. Um, it was, um, Ms. Hansen volunteered to be the representative, and Mr. Monti would be the alternate, but I think that was flip-flopped from last year. But thank you to both of you for your, um, interest and, um, willingness to attend these meetings, again, on behalf of our board. Um, so I do need a motion, uh, to appoint Brooke Hansen as the Genesee County Association of School Board Members Representative, and Jared Monti as the alternate. And I would second that. Uh, any questions or comments on this? I guess I'll just say again, thank you to both of you, uh, for attending this. Um, as you know, this is a, this can be very helpful, um, to bring back information to our board of things that are going on, um, countywide. And they do provide a lot of professional development opportunities as well for us all as a board. For example, the February board meeting is invited, the whole board is invited to attend that as well, so. All right, all of those in favor to appoint Brooke Hansen as the representative, and Jared Monti as the alternate? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, let's see, next we need to, um, there is a rescinded policy two-two-six-four on non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. Um, and we have received information from our legal counsel, um, and federal courts as they have vacated the twenty twenty-four Title IX ruling and regulations. Um, so now there's a new, well, we're going back to the old nationwide law on that. So it's been recommended by both Roon and Collins Waha to rescind the policy related to twenty twenty-four Title IX regulations. Moving forward, the twenty twenty Title IX regulations will continue to apply. Um, because when we approved the new, uh, policy two-two-six-four back in, um, August, we had also, um, I guess it was in July, we had still approved to keep the two-two-six-six policy in place as well due to some, um, current legal injunctions that were going on. So at this point, the only action that we really need to take is to rescind policy two-two-six-four. Um, so I need a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported to rescind policy two-two-six-four on discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. Any comments or questions on this? Mr. Murphy?
Hey, good Mrs. Luck, this is a good day for America. Uh, in February, or, um, I forget when they did that, this fall, the, um, uh, court in Kentucky ruled that this was an overreach by administrations, uh, current, former administration. And, uh, so we got away from the Constitution, it's nice to see that we have a judicial branch that checks and balances for America, that's what makes America great. And, uh, so they ruled that this was inappropriate, and so we're going back to the good old days, and I'm looking forward to that. So thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Ms. Hansen?
Um, I just want to say that even though this is being withdrawn, we are still covered under Michigan's Elliot Lawson Civil Rights Act. So really, um, not much has changed.
All right, please, for her.
Um, I'm just super excited that we're gonna rescind this policy, and even though there is the state, uh, Elliot Lawson law, federal law, trumps state law, and I'm really excited that we're doing this for our community, our staff, our educators, and our kids.
All right, I'd also just like, I guess, publicly say and remind that, um, the Board of Education is a non-artisan, non-political board. Um, that is, we, we follow the law, and whatever the law is, whether we agree or disagree with it at the time, um, that should stay out of our school board discussions, but I understand that everybody has their own opinions on this. So, um, with that, we do have a motion in support to rescind policy two-two-six-four. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, up next, we need to designate Russ Sosowski as the signing designated for Genesee County School Coordinating Agreement, um, with regard to, um, the county clerk's office here. So, um, Russ, if you have anything you want to comment, I know you've shared the information with us.
Uh, I, I, I can't tell you what the meeting's about, we're never going. And so typically in the past, uh, as a school district, we haven't really dealt with elections, uh, other than making sure that our district hasn't changed, and they have over the years. Uh, this year, we will be attending because, uh, we are working with Argentine Township. We are working with Argentine Township to hold elections here within our school dis, uh, within our, one of our school buildings. Um, so I have talked to Brooke Hansen, uh, about maybe if I could go instead of her, um, and be the designated from the board, uh, to learn a little bit more about it, and, and just to make sure that we've got everything in place prior to any election being held, uh, on our property.
All right, very good. Uh, so it is the administrative recommendation to, um, approve Mr. Sosowski as the designated, um, to allow him to meet with the Genesee County Clerk's election and, I guess, sign the coordinating committee report as presented in our notes, um, after that meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and seconded, designating Russ Sosowski as the signing designated for Genesee County School Coordinating Agreement. Presenting all the questions on this, but anybody? Thanks, Russ.
No problem.
All of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, up next is our bond bid package number six, uh, for Hyatt Elementary, Central Elementary, and LMS. And I know we got a lot of information on this in advance to look through with regard to, um, who we would like to award, um, and all of the bids and alternates. Um, I know Mr. Vandez is here as well, so, uh, before we get into any of the nitty-gritty, because it is an actua tion this evening, it is the administrative recommendation to approve the LCS Bond Bid Package for Central Hyatt and Lyndon as presented. Um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that, so it's been moved and supported, and now we can have a discussion, or Mr. Vandez, if you have any other information you'd like to present to us.
Well, good evening. I don't know if everyone had, uh, opportunity to look through the information that we sent, we sent some kind of chip in the arena. Yes, huh?
Okay.
Maybe it's too far away. Um, we did send some clarifications out later today. Uh, Sam from Barton Mall wouldn't be here to present, so I don't have any problem filling in and going through this, but I wanted to make sure that there were clarifications to the board, so everything made sense when we were reviewing this. Uh, the first clarification that we made, uh, there was one, uh, comment that I know Mr. Sosowski received regarding one of the low bidders on the electrical side. Um, we had a similar situation, the low bidder on the plumbing side, uh, he missed a large section of sculpt that was in the work, and the bid documents it, and it pertained to the piping, the gas piping and such, that went to generators, so he actually re, he rescinded his bid, so we wound up with the second low bidder. Um, the other one that was in question was the electrical contractor. Uh, if you look at the bid, um, tabulation sheet, um, on the surface, it would look as all, just mine's a little small, so. Um, the advanced contracting was the low bid on the electrical, but what they did is they broke their pricing out for the fire alarm at Central. So you have to go down to the actual fire alarm category, which is standalone, uh, the intent, we had, it was shown that way, um, but what happened is all the other contractors included the fire alarm number in their general number. So, uh, when you combine, uh, Advance's base bid at a million two twenty-four, you have to add the two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for the fire alarm, which doesn't make them the low bidder, uh, so then, in that, uh, in that regard, it goes to Pierce Power. The other thing that was, um, cumbersome was kind of if you went through it, you calculated all of the base bids for each of the three projects, and then you looked at total base bid, it was a discrepancy. Um, the reason for the discrepancy is because there's allowances that are built into all of those contracts for things that are unforeseen. Um, so we asked Barton Mall to put together a sheet, spreadsheet, we provided that to the board, just kind of laying out what that looks like and the reason for that. Um, and really what it allows is things that may come up during construction. It allows those things to be taken care of with contractual dollars that we have built into each and one, each of their contracts for various reasons. Uh, like the demolition contractor, who does all of the demolition from all these buildings, he's also responsible to ride, uh, dumpsters for all of the trades. So the whole entire time that we're in construction, he's bringing cans and taking cans and paying that, and basically we're reducing that um, from an allowance that he has. If that allowance doesn't, isn't spent, that money is still in districts. So not given the allowance, we just pay them out from that allowance if need be. Um, a lot of these things probably won't come to fruition, but like even on mechanical, plumbing size, a couple of the examples I gave, uh, you know, we could have valves, and mechanical systems don't work, and that is unknown at this point. Until you get into the project, and you get ceilings open, and you start working on these systems. So again, none of these allowances are things that are just handed to them, and if everything works out, they keep the money. It doesn't work that way. There are allowances that are built into the contract, and if things go bad, we, we pay from those allowances. But if it's not spent, it's this money that we give back. It's part of the contract at the end, after they're done with substantial completion, uh, we will have a change order that is a, is a deduct from them, from their contract that comes back. So we're not spending the money and looking to get it back, it's just something they would never give, we don't pay it. If that makes sense, hopefully. Um, so we tried to kind of break it out in every category, so it was very apparent to everybody of what those dollars are. Um, I'm on a committee with the, with Barton Mall, and with French Associates, and we have meetings every Friday to go over change orders. So these are things that would apply to those change order meetings, and we talk and discuss, and make sure things are, you know, on the open up too. And I'm very picky when it comes to, you know, the information they're providing, and the documentation that we give from these contractors. Sometimes we'll ask them for a quote, sometimes we'll ask them to do a T and M if it's something that is kind of minor. Um, and, and then Barton Mall will track the hours daily, if there's extra hours associated with some of this work. So we have, I believe, eleven contractors, uh, that we're recommending to the board to kind of, I would say, wrap up the vast majority of the bond work that we still have on the table. There's gonna be more. Uh, we have some other stuff that we come to the board, uh, we have some abatement, similar to what we had, uh, previously. At this point, the abatement that we have is at, uh, Central and Hyatt, and it really is floor materials. In the last bond in two thousand and three, we did floor abatement. Back when they did abatement of flooring, back then, we had vinyl tile, and the tile and the mastic underneath was asbestos-containing material. So back twenty years ago, the way that they did the abatement, the way they did the glue removal was chemically. So they would remove the tile from the floor, they used a chemical agent that was like a citrus cleaner. And what they would do is they would take the glue off the, the surface, but it, the glue remains in the pores of the concrete. Today, the way they do abatement of that type of, uh, substructure is actually with, with a machine and a grind of concrete to make sure that all of that material comes out of the floor, and you're not left with doing this a second time, kind of like we are. Luckily, this time, it's not all of the, the floor material, so then we'll pull the carpeting out, but there's still some of the black old original residue that's asbestos-containing. Um, it's funny, but it's not. The stuff at Central, you know, it was in every location when we did testing. The black glue, which is the original old stuff back from the sixties and seventies, is asbestos-containing, you know, almost in every space. At, at Hyatt, it was very little, the vast majority is not asbestos-contained, even though it's black. Um, so we do, we kind of do, uh, secondary testing just to make sure, our management plans go back to the eighties. So our, the asbestos we have in this district is being managed, believe it or not, every six months, we have inspections and, and reports that are due, you know, for our record keeping, and also for the state, and then over three years, we do re-inspections. So as we do abatement projects, so our records get updated all the time, we should be able to pull those off a shelf and give them to somebody with confidence they can go in and work on something without having to worry about their health or safety, or, you know, health and safety of others. Um, and that's, that is the case, but what they found with this chemical that they used, instead of the abrading, the, the material remains. Um, so in essence, we're kind of doing things over a second time. Um, obviously, it's not something we want to do, but we have no choice in the matter. It's, uh, when, when you discover it, it's something that you have to manage and you have to work through the process. So I'll be bringing some of that stuff back to the board, uh, we'll have to walk through in February with a couple of contractors and, uh, have some numbers come back to the board. In addition to that, we're gonna bring a package, uh, later this, we're probably gonna have some sidewalks. Uh, we have furniture, things that we're still gonna buy, you know, throughout the district. We have, you know, other expenses, you know, that the district is responsible for, whether it be advertising or other types of things that we do as we get through this bond process. Um, as it stands today, inclusive of the, of, of the award that we're asking the board to approve tonight, uh, which is in the seven million dollar range. After that, we basically have, uh, three point four million dollars of unallocated funds that are remaining in the bond program. So that will pay for the furniture, the abatement, you know, any of those kinds of things that are left between now and the tail end of, of, of this project. Uh, we have security, uh, some security stuff that we're gonna do, technology upgrades, teacher furniture, teacher computers, student computers. So there's an array of things that are more or less purchases, not necessarily construction projects, uh, that will bring, you know, back to the board. Uh, but there will be some limited, uh, construction type stuff, whether it be abatement or the concrete, or some other little things that will bring back for board approval as well. Any questions?
All right, thank you for, um, all the detailed information, we always appreciate, um, the transparency, um, that you've shared with us. And I know, on behalf of the board, I really trust, uh, the work that you're doing, so thank you very much, uh, Mr. Vandez, for all that. Uh, comments or questions for board members? Mr. Monti?
Yeah, thanks, Miss Luck, Mr. Thanks, Mr. Vandez, for the information. I just wanted to comment, I usually do this, but I really appreciate all of the detail that you put together for us, you tell us very thorough, very well thought out, you talk about how much time you spend going through the quotes, that's evidenced by all the alternates that you had to use to break out the entire bid matrix. And then, Mr. Ramberg, and now we're talking, we both picked up on that issue that you're talking about with the, the electrical, the one bidder appearing to be hired, the matrix, but then you looked down and you figure out that, you know, they did not include the, the fire system piece. So you were all over that, so we appreciate it. And, uh, yeah, and I, when I look at the list of the bidders, or where they're from, all Michigan companies, and I think there's eleven of the companies, and out of those eleven, I think there's seven that are either flint or sagging or, or flushing, so definitely right in our area. so definitely right in our area, and that's always good to see, so, yeah, I'm totally comfortable with this, and we got the low bid in every category, so a good thing for the district, and appreciate all of you and Mr. Exerzor, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, many of these contractors are ones that we've worked with through this bond, or even the projects that we've done outside of the bond through, you know, for many years, so very comfortable with all of them.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Slough. Thank you, Mr. Vandez, for the presentation. That three-point-four million, that seems like a fairly healthy amount. Is that going to be more than we need to do the remaining, or purchase of furniture from the abatement issues?
Probably not. I would say, just in student devices and teacher computers, we're probably looking at about a million-two in today's dollars. Now, you know, we're saying that we could potentially be seeing a forty-five percent increase in the cost of technology coming. We don't know that. This is not coming until next year, you know, and then there's money for a refresh as well, so, no, I don't think so. Furniture, we're looking at probably a million dollars in additional furniture for the elementary schools, and also updating the new STEM areas that we're going to have in both the elementary schools, so. It sounds like a lot of money, but when you start kind of nickeling, I don't think there's going to be, there's certainly going to be money left, but I think the intent would be to maybe expand some of the sidewalks and some of the other work that we want to do. You know, we want to use this money out and make sure that it's within the confines of the things that we looked at, you know, from the beginning. But I don't think there's going to be a lot of money. It's been very tight going through. I will say that, yeah, I looked kind of today at our, at our bond application, which is this document here, and it's, you know, just pages and pages and pages of details, the stuff that we originally designed to develop this bond issue from. And, you know, we've hit the mark on, I would say, ninety-five or better percent of the things that were in that original bond application. Looking at it for big things, and I talked to the board about this long ago, is the lighting at the middle school. And we've been kind of looking at the middle school as really our newest building, and probably the building that we could peel things away from without having a negative impact, you know. The other buildings, just that wasn't the case. And really, the only thing that's probably outstanding that we aren't going to do as part of this project or the bond program is going to be the lighting replacement inside the building. And I think it's because it's costly, more costly than we can do it in other areas. We can use it to do some LED lamp retrofits rather than a complete system. And today's energy code requires a whole lot of electronics behind the scene, which makes it very, very expensive. So I think there's a better way to skin that cat, and I think we can do more accountable.
So you mentioned, well, in the past, we did that one-point-seven-three-dollar retro light program years ago. We borrowed the money for, paid it back through sinking fund payments and stuff like that. And that was another way that we could accomplish a larger scope of work than just the sinking fund dollars could create. So this, this work at the middle school that you'd like to do, the reason why we did a lot of that other work back in the day was because of the energy savings on the program. This work at the middle school, would there be much of an energy savings on that issue, or would it just be more effective, more efficient?
Yeah, it cost avoidance because it's getting more expensive to buy the ballast for the lighting that we have, you know, it's kind of going away. The, you know, we still have fluorescent light, ATA lighting. Now, the lighting that we have is efficient, much more efficient than what you might be replacing it today, you know, something today. If you had known a twenty-year program like we did, you know, you'd be in a different ball. There's still savings. We probably still would save thirty percent on the, the energy consumption of our lighting in the building. But there's programs for consumers now where they pay for a lot of this and you can get significant rebates. And in some cases, you can just have contractors directly pay for consumers through some of these programs, do light or lamp retrofits, where they simply take out a bulb and they put LED bulb into place, and you keep the existing fixture, and that's what we're going to look at. The net result is you get new LED lights, you still get the efficiency, you just don't get a new fixture. You know, the fixtures are, the lenses are, are only twenty years old, which, I mean, is old, but they're not yellow, like some of the stuff that we have in the buildings that are from nineteen sixty, you know, significant difference in that. So I think we can get away with it there and still have a, you know, good energy savings and have a good product going on.
But you're saying that basically with the three-point-four million, we're going to spend it on all these other things you've just identified here, there wouldn't be any remaining dollars to put towards this lighting project?
There might be. It's something we'll look at as we get beyond all these furniture purchases and kind of see where we're lacking when we finish with all the technology purchases and what that looks like as we go into the future.
You know, and again, we do have a reasonable balance in the safety fund right now. If that's, do you think that would warrant some support from that fund with the...
I have some preliminary numbers from consumers, and it's, you know, we're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars versus a million and a half dollars. So to do a, just a light, a lamp upgrade, yeah. What I call the lamp upgrade rather than a light retrofit.
Okay, well, it's been a challenging climate for you through those bond project stuffs, obviously with the inflationary factors that we've dealt with over the last five years. So, I mean, probably, probably weren't able to do, I mean, you described that we've done everything we planned to do with the bond. Obviously, we'd probably get a lot more if we had building climate like we had back in the five.
Sure.
We did back then.
Yeah, last time around, we wound up with a pile of money at the end, and we were able to do enhancements. You know, the problem is when you do this, you plan for with some of these, you know, alternates and things like that, which we were able to do this time. And if things don't work out, you just can't, you don't pick some of those alternates up, which maybe are just enhancements. You know, finishes and tile in bathrooms and things like that, you know. You peel those away that kind of, the maintenance need, and we did that a few times, you know, we're still cognizant of that, but...
The thing is with an alternate is it represents something you wanted to do, but you weren't able to.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, overall, I'm very pleased. I mean, it's been a nail-biter right, you know, for the last four years, right from the first day of opening, it was horrible news. And, you know, we've been more accustomed to it, I guess, over the last few years, that we expect the worst, and we've been better at planning for it. Everyone's more in tune with planning for things that don't go so smoothly.
Fortunately, after those first year or two, it seemed to level off a little bit.
Yeah.
Growth and the inflation hasn't been as bad.
Right.
So that's helped out a lot. If that has continued, that the rate of wants really out of the disaster.
Yeah, and we're getting better participation, you know, in most categories, better than what we had sometimes, you know. So, you know, overall, things have went well, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, seeing none then. It has been moved and seconded to approve the LCS bond bid package number six for Central Hyatt and Lyndon. The board has presented. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Alright, we have one discussion item this evening, and after our previous action items, this will probably make a lot of sense to the board. Mr. Sosowski and I, and Mrs. Keller and others have been in kind of contact about discussing our process for approving our board professional development through NASB and other things. Our current board bylaws do not require us to take board action for these types of events. We're just, it's something we've kind of just always done, so that's why we continue to do it. But in my opinion, it, I don't think it's completely necessary, and as board members are wanting to seek out these professional development opportunities, just having it, kind of running it through myself and Mrs. Keller, Mr. Sosowski, and then reporting back, you know, the next, or before the next board meeting. I know Miss Hanson's always good about sending out emails, things that she's learned. Maybe just maybe mention during board reports, things that we took away from our trainings, things like that, can sort of streamline our process a little, and these events can sort of just go on consent moving forward if we agree that that seems like a reasonable process, so. I don't know if there's other comments or questions. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, yes. You know, right now, we're largely reimbursed for a lot of these classes, up to a hundred dollars, is that correct?
That's correct.
When it goes over that, then we pay the difference.
That's correct.
And in some of these classes that are being taken now by a lot of the board members that have been on the board for a while, are two-hundred level classes and three-hundred level classes. And aren't those typically a little more than a hundred dollars?
Most of them are, most of them are ninety-nine, or still. I mean, if it's like a workshop, it might be one-ninety-eight.
Right.
Or if it's a full conference, it might be a little more than that, but they are changing the reimbursement process a little bit. I need to get some clarification on that, if it's completely going away, or they're just, they're, they have a budget for that, and people are using it, which is good, so they may change a little bit how some of that reimbursement works, which has been a nice, that's been a nice value added to be able to have that, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate that we've had people take advantage of that, basically. My concern is that if that goes away, the reimbursement, that we have kind of like an open-ended checkbook for people to take classes. Quite frankly, some of these classes, I think, are starting to get into like we're administrators and we're not board members anymore. It's really kind of getting out there, and I think, I don't know that there's really a value for a board member to be taking those classes. So I, I, I'm, I, I think we, at some point, because like you said, as long as they're free, I don't care. But once we have to start paying, and any class that we have to pay on, I think should still go through board approval. The classes that are reimbursable right now, go for it. I accept all, all the ones that I don't agree with, putting them on consent, so. Thank you.
Alright, any other comments? I mean, I feel there's a lot of value in these professional developments, and nothing else to, you know, work with other board members, see what's going on around the state, kind of get ourselves immersed in that education infrastructure across the state of Michigan and with others in our similar roles, you know, and just to be savvy board members regarding, you know, for example, you know, one of the sessions that I'm going to be attending is regarding like how to work with the media. That is not something we've had to do a lot of, but if, if it came about, as a board president, I would want to know what the best practices are, you know. And I've had some training on that, but just to keep up to date, as media is always changing, you know, it's important for us to make sure that we're, you know, presenting ourselves in the best possible way for many community schools as well, so we're not crossing any lines there into administrative lines, actually, in my opinion, kind of keeps us out of that lane, I feel like. But, but I know everybody's got their own opinions on this, I just know that we've spent a lot of, you know, not a lot of time, I guess, but it seems that we accidentally quite regularly on our board agendas, and sometimes it seems redundant. If, you know, for something that's reimbursable, we don't need to, you know, necessarily take action on it.
Sure. If that's going to turn a thirty-five-minute meeting into a twenty-eight-minute meeting, I don't really care. Okay, I'm good for thirty-five. These board meetings have gotten shorter and shorter. And yet, we still don't address issues like student enrollment, like, you know, where's our direction going as a district, and how we can make it more positive for people to send their kids here, the kids that live here especially. So I'd really rather say our focus needs to go there than worrying about how other boards are doing, stuff like that. We're looking, we're just avoiding some common sense opportunities here to make this district better, and instead, we're reaching for these pie-in-the-sky opportunities that really aren't producing any results that I've seen so far. Thank you.
We can certainly agree to disagree, and Mr. Murphy, you should know for being on the board long enough, if you ever have any items you'd like to add as discussion items to the agenda, you're always welcome to you on my side.
I'm working on one right now.
Because we can discuss any of those topics that you would like, and I feel like we do hit on those items, such as our strategic plan and enrollment, when we talk about school of choice and our budget and everything else. So I guess I'm a little confused as to a couple of your comments, but nonetheless, this discussion item is regarding those trainings, so. I don't know if anybody else has any comments?
I have a question. So when it comes to being reimbursed, it seems like a lot of the fees are reimbursed. Is there like a dollar amount that the board would like to stay under, like, so like say, like we, a bunch of us start doing these classes, and they're not always reimbursed, do we say, okay, we cap it at three thousand dollars a year? And then there is classes that you can go away for the weekend and then get reimbursed for the mileage, the meals, and the hotel stay versus taking it virtually. Do we have a budget like that as board members where we don't spend too much in one year?
Yeah, that's definitely something we would look to decide, determine, is our budget for that. I mean, it hasn't really been an issue in the past because we haven't had, we've never gone over a very minimal amount for training, even before it was reimbursable, because not, not a lot of board members have always taken advantage of, you know, furthering their training. But there have been more opportunities provided lately, and so we just thought it would be worth discussing, you know, as more and more people might be interested in doing these trainings. I mean, to Mr. Murphy's point, if it's, you know, going to drag our meeting out by two more minutes, it's not a big deal to me. I just thought that it's also not a big deal to me if anybody wants to go to a professional development. You don't necessarily need my permission to do that, you know, depending on as long as we're staying within our constrained, you know, budget.
Yes, that's all I just worry about the budget, what we spend per year.
Yeah, that's definitely something.
In case like we're like, oh, we're all going to do it this year, like, you know, how much does it cost?
Right.
Yeah, I'll just add that, I mean, Mr. Murphy makes good points. I mean, I think it's worth, if we've been doing it for so long, and it's been working, and it brings it to light, we discuss it, that's not necessarily a bad thing. I guess if we wanted to go down this direction to his point, if we wanted to, you know, try to put the energy into saying like, okay, here's the, here are the classes and the dollar amounts that don't need to go on the agenda and above a certain line, and those ones should be going to the agenda discussed, and I think we could go that way, or we could keep it the same, but I can see, I can see it going either way.
I think things like, you know, maybe the full conferences or things, you know, could go on the agenda, except that was going to be a little more costly, but the individual workshops and one C and two C classes that, you know, are not things that we necessarily...
Well, the other thing that gets not recognized when it goes on consent, and is that people in public really don't know. You just say, what's listed on the consent, and you don't give a specific, so you don't really know what board member's taking classes, and so you kind of miss out on some self-promotion, I guess, that's important, so.
Yeah, I guess the only counter to that, and maybe it's not necessarily counter, but the way you mitigate that would be kind of recommending or requiring that the board member would talk about their, their, what they learned from that, but, no, but I see your point there, yep.
I'm sorry, I'm not used to having to set up again yet. I keep, you can only play this way. Come ahead, I'll slow it a bit. Alright, well, I don't see any other discussion at this point, so I guess we can, you know, we can bring it to action, or we can table it. I guess I'll talk to Mr. Sosowski a little more, and we can decide before the next board meeting if we can always discuss further if we decide to take action on it, so. Alright, that was our only discussion item for this evening. We do not have a closed session, so with that, at seven-twenty-seven, we're adjourned.